Thank you all for being here. It looks like we have a big crowd today. I wonder what it's for? Must be, let's see. What do we have on the agenda today? This is the regular City Council meeting of TK South Carolina, Monday, April 15th, 2019. I almost said 2018. Will y'all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. We're hoping this is going to be a very short meeting today. Let's see how we do. We're going to start with a special proclamation for spring pickup. So I will do my reading exercise, my public school education. TK South Carolina proclamation recognizing the spring pickup, Spring Pick Me Up 2019. Whereas April 13th through April 26th is Spring Pick Me Up in the city of TK. And in celebration of Earth Day, the city recognizes the outstanding collaboration and efforts of Keep America Beautiful, Palmetto Pride, Keep York County Beautiful, City of TK, staff and volunteers who execute Spring Pick Me Up. And whereas the city will offer reduced costs for curbside pickup of large items when scheduled through the city, no fees for household appliances when scheduled through the city. And whereas the kickoff starts at 9:00 a.m. at Trailhead Park on Saturday, April 13th, for the spring cleanup, instructions and supplies can be picked up at City Hall. And finally, now therefore, I, David L. O'Neil, Mayor of the City of TK, do hereby proclaim April 13th through the 26th, 2019 as Spring Pick Me Up in the community. And I call upon all citizens to join in the efforts of city staff to volunteer to support Spring Pick Me Up. Dated this 15th day of April, 2019, David L. O'Neil, Mayor, City of TK. One down, two to go. Okay. Wow, this is going to be so cool. I don't have to stand up here at the podium anymore. Justin, my man, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you did while we were without a chief for a while there. And this is going to be a proclamation recognizing Captain Justin Daly of the TK Fire Department for his commitment and service as interim chief. Guess I'll read this one. Whereas Captain Justin Daly was one of the first two firefighters hired by the city of TK, whereas through his commitment to his profession, he was able to achieve the rank of captain within the department. And whereas since December 20th, 2018, he served as the department's interim chief. Whereas during that time, Captain Daly did a tremendous job in leading the department and keeping our citizens and our city safe. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the city of TK do hereby recognize and give our sincerest thanks to Captain Justin Daly for his effort, devotion, and leadership to the city TK Fire Department. Signed this 15th day of April, 2019, David L. O'Neil, Mayor of TK. Thank you very much. Awesome job, my man. Very good. Let me do it this way. You take one corner and I'll take the other corner.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Really appreciate everything you did.
Thank you.
Okay, this time we're going to do the oath of office to our new fire chief, Glenn Hasty. Right? Come on up here. We're going to test my memory real fast because I don't have a script. We didn't rehearse this. So you were with the Charlotte Fire Department for 20 something years?
Almost 29.
Almost 29 years? That's 20 something, that's pretty close. And then you went to the Charlotte Airport. And how long were you there?
I've been there about three and a half years.
Uh huh. And what'd you do there? Did you were the chief there?
I was the battalion chief at the airport on beach shift.
So we looked for a new fire chief for a couple of months and over, what, how many people applied?
Close to 100 applicants.
Close to 100. So this is the number one guy of the 100 applicants we have. So you're probably pretty well qualified to be the fire chief, would be my guess. And you know what? I did not see one, one application. I didn't even read one resume. He does that, that's his job. I can't even by law get involved with all that. And I'm glad I didn't have to do it because I would probably be overwhelmed with reading that much stuff. You can see what my reading abilities are already. But I have a public school education, so. I didn't go to Fort Mill. Those guys can read like that. Me, I gotta struggle, I gotta look at every word. But we're happy to have you.
Thank you.
I think this is going to be a big plus for our city. And I hope you stay here as long as you want to stay here because I'm sure that you'll be here as long as we want you to stay here.
Yes.
And I think you'll be, good job. We don't have a whole lot of fires, do we?
Not too many.
I mean, I hear them go off every once in a while, but usually, we do a pretty good job around here with our fire. We've got a good volunteer force, we've got a good active force. So I think you're going to be well challenged with those guys, they're pretty sharp.
Yes, sir.
And so with that, why don't we do the oath of office?
Okay.
So if you would, you're going to be raising your right hand and I'm going to ask you to state your name and then swear.
Okay.
Okay? Versus affirm. And I should know this, I do this so often, but I know it, I go home in my sleep, I can do this without reading it. But as soon as I stand up here, I don't know what comes after "I." Okay. I state your name.
Aye, Glenn Hasty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, I left that somewhere, didn't I? So I'm going to give this back to Charlie. Those are signed already. And with that ultimate, that great responsibility comes a really cool badge that I want you to have. Wear this in good health and protect our city, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Oh, yes, the wife up here. And the daughter, I hope.
Yeah, this is Carol.
Okay, good. Make sure I didn't get those mixed up or anything.
My wife, Carol.
Okay. All right. So see the badge? You gotta show that badge now. There you go. Back up.
There you go. Thank you. I want to do three. You got them, Walt? All right.
I just want to say that I'm honored to be here tonight. To be able to serve the town, the city of TK and to serve with the firefighters of TK. This will be a great ride. We're going to do a lot of great things together. You guys have laid the groundwork, now we're just going to carry the torch. So we're going to continue to grow and to serve this great community, to give them everything that they need, everything they want. And we're going to serve our community and be a part of that. That's one of my biggest goals in life. And you guys already do a great job with it. So I'm just going to help you to provide resources for you, hopefully to give you some guidance and to move forward together. Mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm honored to be here. Mr. Funnberg, thank you. You guys are great. You've got a wonderful staff and I can't wait to be here.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, item number two is public comments. Mr. Brian Grishaber, would you rather wait till we talk about your specific ordinance or would you rather talk now?
Whatever, whatever words you want.
Um, do it right now?
Yeah.
Wherever you like. Go ahead and, and then we'll even give you another opportunity to come up when we talk about the ordinance. How's that?
I wouldn't do that kind of ordinance.
Okay, we'll do that then.
It'd be hard to do it once, but it's twice.
All right, we're with you, we're working with you, whatever you want to do. Okay, let's see. Item number three, approval of minutes. Council, you've seen the minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, subtractions, changes? Hearing none, seeing none, the minutes stand as published. Item number four is a committee, man, we're moving around. Item number four, planning commission.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So our last planning commission meeting, we had two new members that were sworn in. So congratulations to Jason Pitcock and Rebecca Richardson, our new two planning members. And we also recognize our two outgoing members, Doug Burns, who served us for 22 years on the planning commission, and Kathy Masters, who served us well for 14 years. They also elected officers. So Chris Leonard, our past chairman, continues to be our current chairman. So congratulations, Commissioner Leonard. And we also elected Larry Franklin as our vice chair. So those are our leaders on the, on the team now. A couple of other things, we talked about the planning commission, comp plan review, and what the process was going to look like for that. We went over some of the committees and discussed that. So just a heads up, on April, I believe it's 22nd, next Monday, is the first meeting for the comp plan update. So make sure that's on your calendars and look forward to working on that very important item. And that's really all I have to add.
All right, thank you, Alicia. Next is the TK Forever Foundation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the TK Forever meeting, we did a recap of the business gala that we held last month. We did have several new members as well. We elected a new chair, Lanell Morgan, so congratulations to her. A couple things that we have coming up, the Veterans 5K Race on Memorial Day, which is the Sunday. Family sponsorship for Catawba Park, it's $100. This is the last week that you're able to sign up for that. You can come into the beach or swim center, right? Or you can pay online. It's $100, you do get a tee shirt, your name goes on the signs that will be at both Turner and Rundy Field. And you'll be helping to support Catawba Park, which we are working to get to, hopefully later this year. Friday, May 10th, we are having the Taste of York County here upstairs in the Glenon Center. We'll have several food vendors, some local beer vendors, we'll have a band, the whole thing, all proceeds are going to all play together. And then hopefully, this will be a reoccurring event that we can host each year and we can move to those funding, funds going to, towards Catawba Park the following years. So if you haven't bought tickets to that, we would encourage you to do that, should be a really fun night. And then finally, we talked about a community gala, since we've done the business gala, we want to open it up to residents as well so that they can learn more about Catawba Park and what's to come. So the community gala will probably be sometime this fall, late summer, early fall. So that's about it.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to item five, new business. This is where Brad, you'll get a chance to speak in a minute. What I'll do is I'll read the executive summary and then we'll turn it over to you, okay? Okay, item number five is introduction of a first reading of an ordinance to provide for regulations for the use of the Fort Mill River Access area. The Fort Mill River Access has been within the city's jurisdiction for several years and as such, our public safety staff are the first responders to incidents on the river and at the river launch. Parking is extremely limited at this facility and over the past two summers, it has been almost impossible to get public safety into the facility due to the extreme number of cars. The parking situation is further complicated by outdoor outfitters occupying large areas of the meeting, large, let's see, large areas and meeting their patrons at the site. On January 1st, 2019, the city began its lease of the river launch area and as such, are now responsible for the care, maintenance, and operation of the area. The regulations considered in this ordinance put the emphasis and priority on the general public user while still allowing outdoor outfitters to drop off and pick up their clientele at the river launch area versus meeting them on site. It also requires the outfitters to obtain a city business license in order to utilize the public facility as part of their business. Okay, Brad, if you'd like to speak up? And anybody else who wants to talk after Brad is perfectly willing, able to do that. Go ahead and state your name and address and then you've got three minutes.
I'm Brad Grishaber. I actually live in Charlotte, North Carolina, but I do operate an outfitter service in TK for about five years. And the vicinity, you know, so we service all the way from Allison's Creek to, well, we've, we've done Lake Jacasi and Great Falls and pretty much everything in between. So what we do is we're a mobile service where people call and they want to rent something and we just show up and we deliver it. And that's how we've been operating, which, you know, and I know there's always room for improvements, but, you know, it's just, I think, you know, with the research and stuff, that other cities and stuff like that is done, when they got areas that's overtaxed, you know, they've always come to outfitter services or one of the methods of helping to control that situation to improve upon serving the public, you can serve more public, more efficiently with half the vehicles. It's kind of like you're trading one person that can blow up, get 50 tubes ready and 50 kayaks ready, you know, versus 50 people doing 50 tubes, 50 kayaks. So it takes up a lot more area and stuff like that. But, you know, I understand there's always room for improvements. There's definitely a need for regulation, absolutely. You know, but it was kind of abrupt. So the sort of, the city ordinance would probably devastate my business because I won't have time to adapt to the new ordinance. I have been looking, searching for alternatives for the last few years, but, you know, it's with three months of income, you know, it's hard to do 12 months of lease with just three months of income. So, you know, I was hoping that, you know, y'all could, you know, at least research this, you know, as other municipalities have and they've come to the conclusion that, you know, one of our, our services actually helps to improve the situation that y'all are under today. You know, with that, I mean, I know we're not perfect, I know we've, we have room for improvements, absolutely. But I think it would be a grave mistake to just sort of cut us out, especially this quickly, you know, without giving us a chance to sort of adapt to these new policies.
Well, thank you for coming. I can assure you, it's not our intention to put you out of business. We want you to, we want you to do that. We like having the chance to rent canoes and going down the river. So that's, that's not really the issue that we're talking about. We just need to make sure that our parks are available for the public. And so when businesses start taking over our park, then that's when we have to, we have to, that's when we have to adapt. So we'll have to find some medium ground there, but we don't want you to go away. We just want you to, we just need you to kind of make it where the public still has access to the park. We have the same problem down at Windjammer. We have a very-
A lot of my customers were TK.
Right, oh yeah, understand. And if they're all Charlotte, that's fine, too. We want everybody to have, we're not trying to stop access to the river for anybody.
You know, I have reservations, you know, family reunion and wedding from, that set up reservations for this year, you know, they've had to go ahead and make other.
Yeah, well, where were you going to have the wedding? Were you going to have the wedding in the park?
No, no, it wasn't going to be a wedding there, but they were going to wedding party where they were going to go down a tube and sort of like a-
I think you can still do that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So, so how much time would you need to be able to adapt? Thank you.
You know, it, it took me, you know, it took me a couple of years to really think up this business model and implement it, which, I know that's not what y'all are wanting to hear, but, I mean, that's what it took me to sort of build, put this thing together and do it. But at least a season, like one season, would definitely help.
Is the main issue becoming a city of TK business licensee or is-
Yeah, I've had a TK business license. When I originally started up, I didn't know that Fort Mill Access was in TK. I contacted Fort Mill and they were like, oh yeah, you're good. They didn't tell me that, you know, you were in, it was in the city limits of TK, you know, because, you know, I've been using it since the 90s and, yeah, I see Fort Mill, I'm thinking it's Fort Mill. So there was some confusion when I first started out about the business license. But the business license is not an issue. Paying taxes or paying a service fee or stuff like that's not an issue. It's just an issue of, you know, remote parking, double, you know, I need more shuttle vehicles, more staff, staff is a big problem. Finding reliable staff is a huge issue that can, that can handle these sort of things. You know, and it's transient, my help is transient because usually I'm getting college kids in the summertime and stuff like that and, and I don't get them the next season. So I don't have that option of somebody with, that's going to, you know, stability and stuff like that.
So maybe Brad, if you don't mind, if you could leave us your contact information and, and maybe we can sit down and talk a little bit more specific about what your issues are and see, you know, what options we have within the, the new regulations and how, you know, we can best work that out for you. But if you don't mind leaving your contact information for us.
Yeah, absolutely. I would love to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so the way, I'm sorry, so the way this works, this is a two reading ordinance. So we will, we will read the ordinance for the first time today. And then we have 30 days to do it again. We can even postpone that later if we, if we so choose. But it takes, so you'll have at least 30 days to negotiate with the city, with other members of council, see if we can come to some type of agreement.
That would be great.
But we have, we do have a, you know, a parking issue.
Yeah, I understand y'all's issue and your obligation as well.
Right.
I'm not belittling that at all.
Right.
And I know y'all are in a hard spot, but, you know, but I think that my, you know, my type of services can actually help you all improve your all's situation rather than, than hinder you all. Like other people, you know, you can't go to a national park and just go up there and get in the water, you know, just for this very reason.
We, we get it 100%.
Yeah, and I don't want to, you know, stop the public, stuff like that or anything like that. But it's just one of those things, the issue that-
Brad, we, we pride ourselves on being the recreational community of Lake Wiley. So I mean, we, we welcome your being there and the ability for, our, our parks are open to the public. We're not trying to be exclusive. They're open to the public. We welcome anyone, our residents, Charlotte residents, anybody else. But when we have limited space at these public parks and somebody is monopolizing that space to operate a business, I mean, that's, that's why we're talking. So, you know, I urge you to adapt. You say there's room for improvement and there's room to adapt and we can certainly discuss it and try and find a way to work it out, whether you have to shuttle your people in and out or whatever. But, you know, thank you for offering that service to people around here. We're fine with it, we just have to find a way not, not to monopolize our space at the parks.
Yeah, I wasn't really trying to monopolize it. I apologize for, you know, putting that persona out there. I don't know what to say about that. That's not what my intention, I was just trying to service. It just grew so rapidly, I couldn't keep up with it. You know, so many people, it's been an avalanche of people. You know, each year it's doubled, the amount of people that's wanted to use the services. And it's not, I've not advertised a couple of little magazines, but it's just more or less for political things versus actually exposure, but I'm not really advertised, you know, since the first year.
All right, well, we'll do, we'll do the first reading today.
Here's ten, paper, if you need it.
And then we have a month to work all this out, talk it over, and then we'll come to some kind of conclusion and by the next, by the May meeting. Does that seem fair enough?
Yeah, that's right, May.
Whatever the third Monday of May is. Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments? Any public comments before we start reading the ordinance? Yes, sir, come on up. Norm, state your name and your address.
Norman Snyder, 1053 Silver Gold Drive, TK. I don't have anything, any skin in this game at all and I don't know a whole lot about it other than I enjoy the river access. Sometimes I'll just go down there and have lunch, you know, and watch the water come over the dam or through the dam.
You're a fun guy, Norm.
Hey, when you're as old as I am, little things, you know, excite you.
Maybe we ought to put a webcam there, you do it from home.
This, this time of year and through the winter, you know, you hardly see any cars there, obviously. And even in the summertime during the week, there's hardly any cars. Obviously, there's more than there are this time of year. It is a river launch. And as a river launch, people come and they bring boats and kayaks and jet skis and whatever and put it in there. When they launch their, their vessel, they have to park. So they're not only just parking a passenger car, they're parking usually a truck, towing a trailer. And obviously, that takes up a lot of room. So that, that also contributes to your parking. And on the weekends, that's normally when these people are out there launching. So you have that as well as this gentleman's business there. The business seems to be great. There are only two things I'd, I'd like to comment on, it's number one, safety record. And I'm sure it can be researched. If this gentleman's business has an outstanding safety record, serving his citizens, I think that should be considered favorably by the council. If the safety record is poor, then that should also be considered negatively by the council. And I would assume, not reading anything of, of any catastrophes on the, on the river involving this gentleman's tubes or kayaks, that the, the safety record, I assume, would be pretty good. The only other thing I'd like to comment on, just listening to this tonight, is that obviously parking is a huge issue. People come, they have to park their cars. If they park their cars at our river launch and jump in the, the rafts or the, the tubes or kayaks and go down river, still, there has to be somebody to shuttle them back to their cars. If it's the other way around, then the parking is down there, they have to shuttle them up and they're at their cars at the end and they're not coming back all wet and, you know. So, you know, it just boils down to where there's more parking. I'd assume that wherever they come out of the river is down near the pump house someplace. Parking's always an issue down there, it's a very popular area with the Riverwalk. And I'm sure they don't want the parking down there. So it's the Rock Hill Council and the City Council of TK are trying to shove off the parking to each other. That, that's what it boils down to.
Well-
Parking's a parking. The people have the same number of cars whether they're parking at the launch site or the pickup site. And there's always shuttle involved, no matter which way, there's always a shuttle involved. And that's it. That's just observations from this interest-
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
Hey, and next time you go down there to watch the water fall over the dam, give me a holler, me and Gus would like to go. That sounds like a lot of fun.
I monitor it and I just keep in my head the amount of water-
All right, we're with you, man.
The volume. I can tell you're late.
All right. Any other public comments? Anybody want to go with Norm to watch the water fall over the dam? All right. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance to provide for regulations for the use of the Fort Mill River Access area.
I have motion by Gus Machinas, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alicia Dash. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. So Brad, we do this again in a month and that's when it takes effect. So we've got 30 days to come up with a pretty good solution, okay? May 20th.
Yep.
I've been told it's May 20th by Calendar Girl. Okay, let's go to 5B. Okay, this is approval of a sewer easement for 4028 Windward Drive. There is a city-owned sewer line running across 4028 Windward Drive that does not have an easement. This is part of the sewer system the city purchased in 2014. The documents being considered this evening by the city, the city council are necessary to correct this and provide for sewer easement. Are there any questions on council from the public? No questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve an ordinance providing for a settlement agreement for the sewer easement at 4028 Windward Drive and authorize the city manager
and authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to close.
I have motion by Heather Overman. Do I have a second? Second by Gus Machinas. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Item number six, the city manager's report. I told you this would go by fast today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Just a, a couple of quick things, and then I'm gonna get, ask Lacy to come up uh, for a demonstration of a new program we have on our website. Uh, first, our first concert of the season's coming up on Saturday, uh, April twenty-seventh at Rundy Park. Uh, On the Border is the band. They're an Eagles tribute band. Should be a lot of fun, lots of food vendors. So uh, look forward to having, having everybody out uh, that night to visit with us. Uh, on April thirtieth, uh, our TK Police Department, if you haven't seen it online, has taken on teachers from TK Elementary School, Gold Hill Elementary, Gold Hill Middle in a basketball game. Um, it'll be at six thirty P M. at Gold Hill Middle School. Um, it's two dollars for kids to get in, five dollars for adults. Kids will also be able to pay five dollars in order to take a half-court shot uh, during halftime to win a prize. All proceeds from that night will go to the winning team's charity of choice. Um, so looking forward to, uh, to a good time out there. Um, encourage everybody to come out and visit and support that. May eleventh, uh, we are having an open house at the Beach and Swim Center. Um, you don't have to be a member. Anybody's invited. You don't have to live in T K. It's gonna be from two to four. We're gonna have music. It's gonna be concessions. Uh, come get in the pool, come tour the facility if you've never been there. Uh, if you want to join while you're there, we'll be able to assist you with that as well. Uh, registration is online right now. Uh, believe it or not, it, it is gonna warm up uh, at some point, and everybody's gonna be looking to get in the pool. So uh, definitely come out and try the, and uh, check us out during the uh, open house that day. Let's see, I'm gonna be out of the office the end of this week, Wednesday and Thursday, um, on vacation. And City Hall will be closed on Friday for Good Friday for the Easter holiday. Um, we'll open back up normal times on Monday. Um, council, if you need to reach me, I will be available uh, on my cell. Uh, so no worries there. Council, uh, the municipal conference is coming up, and this is just for you to mark your calendars. Uh, it's July eighteenth through the twenty-first. Um, mask-delivered um, uh, agenda packet type things are in your boxes. Sylvia may have put them up there if the day is for you today. Uh, but she'll be getting in touch with you. It will be in Greenville this year. Um, so if you're planning on coming, um, you know, just give Sylvia a buzz, let her know. Um, if you're planning on attending that. Um, immediately following the meeting, we do have cake and refreshments. Um, so that folks, uh, we encourage you to stick around, have an opportunity to meet Chief Hasty and his family and, and welcome them to T K. Uh, and then last, but certainly not least, um, we're gonna, uh, we've got, entered into a new program called, uh, with a company called Recollect. And as Lacy's setting up, I'm gonna kind of drive you through this. Um, so as I'm sure you saw last week, um, we got a bad grade on our recycling over at the recycling facility. Um, and then as, as I was talking to Mr. Machunas, he pointed out to me, we haven't really done a good job boasting about how well we've, uh, we've done up until last Monday. Um, so each recycle truck is graded at the, at the facility. It, uh, if it's around fifteen percent in contamination, it gets an A. Um, if it's around thirty percent, it's a B. And then once it starts getting up close to that forty to fifty percent, then it's a grade C. Uh, at that point, it has to go to the landfill, all right? So we've gotten one grade C. We've gotten a lot of As and Bs, which is good, uh, but we gotta keep it up. So some of the comments, uh, so the, the grade C, we're actually able to pinpoint the truck that it came from and the areas that truck was. So if you live on or off the streets of uh, Windjammer, Windward, Point Clear, or on the, uh, past Timberlake, uh, past the fire station, it came from your areas. Um, you know, so that's, that's where that truck picked up, you know. So we don't know exactly what house or houses, based on level of contamination, it was more than one house. So some of the comments we got back is we were telling people, don't do this, don't, you know, you, you gotta work on the contamination. Well, I don't know what I can recycle now, and I don't know where I can take my things and stuff like that. I either recollect program. Um, once we get it up and, and online, you'll have to go online and sign up for the, uh, for the uh, updates as far as when your collection days are. And you get to decide whether you want them via email, telephone call, text, tweet, Facebook, whatever else there is out there. Uh, you decide how and when you get those notifications. And it's also got a pretty neat thing that, uh, to tell you what is recyclable and what's not. So Lacy, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. I know you guys are really excited about this. This is what Heather's been waiting for. So yay! Uh, with, this program's really great. Um, you can sign up, like he said, for reminders based on your address, so it will pull up. And I wanted to show you guys a little bit how it works. It's not a hundred percent ready to go, but when it is, you're gonna see a ton of promotion from me, and Katie's gonna help me with that. So we will get it live and ready to go. Um, so when you come to the garbage and recycling page, you're going to see this. You're gonna see my schedule, Waste Wizard, and Need Help. Um, so we'll just do an example. If you guys want to give me an address, I can look up and you'll be able to see how it works.
One nine two Shoreline Parkway.
Yeah. It's already online for everyone to see. So as you can see, it's gonna pre-populate as you start typing your address. If you don't, that's where you're gonna go to the Need Help, and you can actually let me know that your address is not coming up. It'll pre-populate, you'll click on it, it's going to give you a schedule. Your recycling, yard waste collection, and garbage collection. It's all there.
What's those long blue bars?
So, great question. So in this system, I can put, when we have events like Spring Pick Me Up, and it will let you know. So it says, Spring Pick Me Up starts on the thirteenth and it ends on the twenty-sixth, and it gives you a little information about what's going on. Um, so you see this green button, it says, Get a Reminder. That's where you can click. And you can get an email, phone call, Twitter, smoke signal, text message. You can embed it in your Outlook or Google Calendar, or you can get a printed calendar. Some people like to have it on the refrigerator. Not me, I have artwork on the refrigerator, so don't need that. You can also, you can search for another address if you want, if you have one. Uh, but the really cool thing about this is your Waste Wizard. So where can you put styrofoam? Where can you put your aluminum cans? Where can you put, give me another example, and we'll type it in and look.
A rubber hose.
Rubber hose.
I know, but people seem to think that's recyclable.
Yes. All right, so it would help to click on Waste Wizard, okay. So as you type it in, you'll see that it pre-populates as well, so it has synonyms in there. So garden hose here. Type it in, and it will tell you, put this in your garbage cart.
Good.
So I, another thing is if you type in an item that um, I don't have in my system, it will say, this, this item doesn't exist, so let's go ahead and, and type David O'Neil. Where can we put him? And it's like, did you need DVD player? We didn't. But if it's an item that doesn't show up, you can say, suggest David O'Neil as a new item. And it's gonna be sent to me to look at. Now, if I'm like, that's not an item I'd want in there, I can just delete it.
It's recyclable.
But if it's something that I need to look up, then I, I have the ability to change it on the back end and add it to the system so that we know where it goes.
Okay, well, just put wine bottles in there.
Wine bottle.
That seems like we have a lot of those at my house.
Is that you?
No, I don't drink, I don't.
Too much information? Um, okay, so there's no curbside collection for this, but it will tell you all of the areas that you can put those, um, those wine bottles or those glass bottles.
I can't see that far. Is, is that give an address or, I can't see what it says from here. Where am I supposed to take my wine bottles?
So the top, so it says there's no curbside collection for this item, but you can drop off collection at, at a collection recycling center. And it gives you all the centers that are closest to your specific address. Right now, I'm working with, the reason why it's not live is we're working on updating all of our addresses in our system. Somehow they got connected to Antarctica, so I, I have no idea. So we're fixing that on the back end, and then once they're fixed, uh, something about coordinate points, I don't know. Once it's fixed, it's actually gonna show you which center is closest to your address. Um, so if you're on the peninsula side, it's gonna show our glass bin that we have down next to Public Works. If you're on the other side, it's gonna show Baxter.
Very good.
Now, if you need help, you can click that. I have a problem searching my address. I would like a printed calendar. I'd like to cancel or modify your reminder. Or if you have a problem with your collection service, such as a missed pickup, you can select these, these items. Um, the missed pickup is gonna go directly to Signature Waste. Most other things are gonna go to me, and I will get you situated.
Okay, that looks like a nice program.
Yeah, it's gonna make it a lot easier.
Lacy, do you want to talk about the data, like how it, you, you're able to kind of track things and update things in real time?
Yeah, yeah, on the back end, if I can go in and I can look at all the metrics for what people are searching, if people are signing up for reminders, what time they want to be notified, how they want to be notified. So I can see all of that data on the back end, which is really helpful through my promotion and how we're getting the word out. I can, I can look at what they're searching, you know, if we get a lot of styrofoam questions or hangers or something like that, I can see that information.
Lacy, is there anything that we can do for those areas that got bad grades, which one of them is my area? Tsk, tsk. Um, is there anything that we can do to help specifically target education in that area?
Yeah, one of the great things about this program is on the back end, I can send out an email to either Route A, Route B, or C. And I can say, this was found in your garbage, make sure that you're paying attention to what's recyclable, what's not. Uh, but yeah, I can, I can specifically pinpoint those routes.
That's using the software?
The software, yeah.
Anything that we can do in the meantime?
In the meantime, um, what we can do is we could do a robo-call, but you'd have to be set up for code red. Do Facebook posts, but other than that, targeting is hard. So we can do a robo-call, um.
Well, we also push this information to the T K Connect liaisons to help us get specifically to their neighborhoods as well.
Yeah, okay. I think that'd be good. I think once, if people know that they're not doing it right, I think that, that might help, that just spread awareness. So thank you for all you're doing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lacy.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else for you, Charlie? Okay, we'll go to item seven, which is the council comments, and we start with Alicia Dash.
Uh, real quick, just welcome chief, and just as the mayor said, keep our city safe. So we look forward to, uh, to having you here and doing that. Um, and then I, I do want to say, uh, thank you to Brad and Norm for coming and speaking up. I know that it's hard, but um, we, we really like to hear from folks, and we want to know what's going on and how our decisions impact, uh, you all. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to come and speak with us, and I appreciate everyone for being here. It's, it's nice to see a lot of people in the audience today. So with that, pass it to Gus.
Um, I just want to say thank you again, Justin, for your service during the interim, and uh, congrats to you, Glenn. We're looking forward to working with you. Um, quick reminder, all play together. We're still a little short on the all-inclusive playground. Um, Heather mentioned it earlier, but make sure that you buy your tickets to The Taste of York County, which is May the tenth. Um, so please make sure that you do that. Um, happy spring bake, break to everyone. Please be careful out there, uh, if you're traveling. Um, I'm headed out tomorrow myself. Um, happy Easter to all. Speaking of Easter, next Saturday is the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast, which is one of their big fundraisers, and also the Easter Egg Hunt. Um, it is amazing that like four thousand eggs can be, uh, found and picked up in about thirty-eight seconds by children of all ages. Um, it's quite chaotic. I think, uh, Alicia, are you introducing, or who's starting that? Heather is, that's right, I'm sorry. And speaking of Heather, congratulations to our mayor Protem on, um, two new puppies, additions to her family that she rescued.
I'm sleep deprived. It's like having a newborn.
What happened?
I have two new puppies.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's all yours.
Um, so, you know, going, again, going last, everybody always steals my thunder. So, um, want to thank all the volunteers that participated in Spring Pick Me Up this past weekend, and I hope that all of our community continues to do that over the next week and a half. Um, I want to welcome our chief again. Thank you, Glenn. We're really excited to have you and family. Um, we are a family here, and I know that you're, you're gonna be a great, um, fit here. Um, so we're glad to have you. Um, we have pickleball courts, so if y'all haven't been down there yet on the lower tennis courts, one of those have been converted into a pickleball court. Um, I hear we have people down there pretty much nonstop since they opened this past weekend. Um, so please, they're open to the public, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Feel free to stop in and check those out. It is the fastest growing sport in America, pickleball. There you go. Fun fact. And then, um, also, just to piggyback off of Gus, the pancake breakfast this Saturday and the Easter Egg Hunt. So I get to say, one, two, three, go, and everybody runs towards the eggs. That's it.
And you need to get out of the way when that happens.
Yeah, yeah, yours, yours, yours and mine.
So they do it by age group, so the little ones, the older ones will mow you over for those things, so get out of the way. Anything else? I'm sorry. Okay, uh, again, I want to thank, uh, Justin for a great job and welcoming the new chief. We're all gonna hang around here after this is all over, after we adjourn. If you want to hang around for cake and cookies or whatever else is back there, um, you're welcome to stick around and meet the new chief. The pickleball courts, so far, a huge success. Uh, we've had, heard lots of good things from it, and we're hoping to do the same with bocce ball. We're trying to bring that next. We're trying to figure out how to do that. Everybody keeps talking about bocce, bocce ball. To tell you the truth, I've never heard of bocce ball until three or four months ago, so. We'll see that comes out. It's supposed to be the other newest and greatest thing, but it's only on this side of the coast, I think. The fast, second fastest growing. I can't remember what else I was gonna say. That's the age thing is hitting me. So everybody have a good Easter, have a safe spring break, and I will consider a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.